Oh, I see the red light. Welcome, everybody. Good to see you on this nice, cool evening. Mr. Perkins, come on in. Nope, I was gonna say, don't sit down, because I'm gonna say, let's stand for the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. What are you doing?
Handing you your stuff.
So we do have a core.
We do.
And, but I have a couple of announcements that I would like to make. First of all, I thank Missy for sitting in for me for the last board meeting. It was very much appreciated. And then the other things that I have is a very special thank you from Jim Walsh. So it says, with sincere appreciation, individuals as you. Thanks again, Jim Walsh. To the SAD 55 Board of Directors, I would like to take this opportunity to say thank you for the support that has been given to me over the past nine years. I always felt that you had my back. And when the board sent me a get well card after a pretty serious surgery, I was deeply touched. The students and staff of SAD 55 are lucky to have such a caring group of individuals. That's what it was, individuals as you. So I thought that that was very nice. The second thing is, in the July 30th Maine Sunday Telegram, they had pictures and listing of young women who were Olympia Snow Leader graduates. And we have a few people. One is Riley Anderson, Cassidy Day, Kira Green, Brooke Landry, and Abigail Sandborn. If you would like to see this, I will pass it around and hopefully the audience will hear this. That we have some, well, we know we have terrific students, but those were special to be recognized by Olympia Snow. And then the last thing that I have, actually, it isn't. This is from Bridget Landry, who Mr. Wolf and I interviewed because she's going to be the next board representative or representative to the board from the junior class. And I thought you might like her reason for applying. I have always been a very involved member of the school community. I am a three-sport varsity athlete, treasurer of my class for the past three years, member of the civil rights team, and a student council representative. Being an active member of so many different groups allows me to hear the perspectives of many individuals. I believe that my commitment to school, positive voice, and ability to listen to others would make me a good student representative on the school board. Growing up around my father, I've been exposed to the importance of being involved in school government and policies. Being a representative on the school board would broaden my understanding of all the issues affecting school and allowing me to help explain and work those situations with my classmates. So I thought that that was very appropriate. And then the last thing, I want to thank the board members who came on the tour of the building. It was very special and everything was shipshape. And we got to see the Baltimore Board that Missy and April put together. And the heading was, that was about pictures, by the way, if you sent one in from the board. Five towns, three schools, one family. I thought that that was very, very appropriate. So as I look around, thank you to all of you who are on the tour. And that is all I have. So consideration to approve the minutes from the August 16th Board of Directors meeting.
Second.
Jolene Bradley.
All those in favor, approve. Consideration to approve the proposed agenda for this September 6th, 2023 Board of Directors meeting.
Bradley, Jolene.
All those in favor. Thank you. Business finance report.
So I'll take this one and construction, I think. So this morning, I thought Maggie did a nice job. You could put it on record, but only a couple months in. State subsidies in, five towns are in. Operating revenues, like every year, month after month, have exceeded expenses. We're in line. Food services, like year after year, is behind to start the year until we start receiving revenue from the state, which should really happen since October, November. And adult ed is ahead. Budgetarily, we started off, we started off well in the same position that we've ended. So financially, things are going very well.
Any questions? Facilities report.
So I have two small items. Again, this was a fairly brief meeting. We just started the year. Judy did a great job covering it. We had a lovely tour of facilities. We had six board members. Despite being short staffed, our custodial team prioritized, organized, and got things ready. Certainly, we would have liked to have more help and things could be absolutely pristine. But they certainly did a super job getting our schools ready to go despite being shorthanded. Thank you to the board members that came. Thought it was a great tour. Main office project, thanks to Johnny Cervantes, who served as sort of our general, and Les Fox, who won the bid, is pretty much done outside of the punch list. Our high school administrative team slash guidance folks are in their offices and working out of the office. It happened on time. There's a few little things left, like most projects, but they did really a super job getting that off the ground, getting it rolling. The thing I want to take a minute, we didn't talk about this morning, and it sort of crept up as the day went on, is heat. Certain heat in our building, like most years when it gets warm like this, is a thought. It's an opportunity to go around towards the end of the day today, just for your information as a school board. The average temperature on our ground floor in all three schools around eighty degrees, plus or minus a degree. The second floor is around eighty-five, plus or minus a degree. We did, with facilities, leave our windows open tonight on the second floor, fans, blow the cold air in. So I talked to some other superintendents. Some schools had classrooms in the nineties. So I think obviously it's tough. We didn't have really great summer weather. It was rainy and lousy in the first week of school. It was been ninety and sunny every day. So we do have cooling spaces in our main offices and our libraries. We have drinking available. Kids can go cool off. We have water. We'll take breaks. We're trying to keep them cool. Teachers obviously always have the option to go outside, work in the shade. Had a chance to go out in the shade today. In the shade, it wasn't, I mean, it was warm, obviously, but not as bad as in the sun. So we are keeping an eye on it. We are keeping fans going. We're trying to keep our kids cool the next couple of days. And I think we're pretty much in line with everybody else around us.
Question, Brad?
Is there any federal funds left to school? What I'm looking at is air conditioning for the kids. You know, we hear every year, well, you know, that last week or two of school is, you know, pretty much useless. It's a hot day, hot days. And, you know, the way the weather's going these days, it looks like it's not gonna get better. So I'm wondering why we're not looking at air conditioning these schools?
Sue Day will give an SR3 report of funding in federal dollars right in my superintendent's section. It's coming.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Do you have another question, Brad?
It's it.
So also, I want to mention from the agenda that both finance and facilities, our next meeting will be October 4th.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Curriculum report.
Oh, that's me. Well, actually, I did it last month because of the, you know, we didn't have a meeting until the 16th and so forth and so on. But I did ask, Suzanne and I met before the board meeting today. And she's gonna, I was very excited to hear about, she called it good news last meeting.
Excuse me.
About the educator program that where the professor hopefully is coming here and our ed techs can become twos or threes and so forth. And it will be an eighteen-month program. I'm not gonna take her, so I'm gonna let Suzanne tell us.
Thanks. See, I've seen it on Channel Six or New Center Six. They've advertised it. They've done a couple of different segments. So they reference GORM school districts. So it's through SNDC and a collaboration with USM. It's called the Educator Apprentice Program. So starting in January, Saukby Valley will be one of those sites where we have ten educational technicians right now who've already expressed interest, who participate in college courses one evening after school from like three to six, and then a really intensive one-week boot camp. And after eighteen months, they will have earned their associate's degree. All of those courses will transfer directly to USM where they could enroll in their brand-new online, completely online special education teacher program, or they could also look at a general education classroom teacher program. So we're very excited. I think it's going to be a great opportunity for some of our educators. So I will keep you posted, but.
Okay, and then as a result of our meeting, we decided that maybe the curriculum committee will not meet in September because kiddos have only been here five to seven days. And some of the teachers have only been, you know, started here five to seven days. So we're going to skip September and hopefully have the next meeting October 11th for curriculum. And Jana Murphy, a new specialist director, will tell us how she's doing, are going, how things are going in special ed.
You said October 11th?
Yes, it's the second Wednesday.
Okay, thank you. Any questions for Maggie? Suzanne, that is amazing.
Yeah, I'm very excited. Thanks.
Well, this committee, we will be meeting soon. I know that Mr. Wolf plans on getting us together sometime in early fall. Lake Region, so that's good. That's, you're gonna be meeting on September 22nd. Oh, representatives. Brad? Maybe just Brad. Lake Region is Brad.
Yes.
Okay, so we'll look forward to a report in October. Adult Ed Advisory Committee, there's no meeting, but the next meeting is October 16th. Policy report. The last meeting was August 16th. So committee intenants with myself, Allison, Missy, and Jill, and Suzanne Day and Carl Landry Ward guess. The committee revised the following policy and decided it was ready for first read at the board meeting in August. DJ bidding purchasing requirements. The committee proposes the following policy be deleted as discussed at the last board meeting. BCC nepotism. And lastly, the committee revised the following policy and decided it was ready for first read at the board meeting in September. IKF graduation requirements. And the minutes say our next meeting is September 13th, but we're not having any meetings in September. And our next meeting will be October 11th. Any questions? Maggie?
Judy, on IKF, the graduation requirements, I think it's number nine. I don't have that list in front of me. It says, they have to complete the SOAR project or used to be senior seven now, right?
Into the new now, right?
Yes.
Junior SOAR project senior exit exhibit.
Yeah. Okay, what is, is the SOAR project, is that what Mr. Vaciano is going to be doing?
No.
Or is it a different SOAR?
It is completely different. If you remember, the junior team, Stevie Dombowski, came and presented to the curriculum committee about the junior project. It's their ongoing academic reflection. And it's like setting their goals for their aspirations. And because we have a lot of students taking advantage of college classes, we don't have one course where every student is in as a junior or a senior. So we still want students who might be taking a college-level junior English to still be reflecting about their future and completing that SOARs project. So that's why we're proposing it.
So it's a different SOAR?
It's absolutely nothing to do with the middle school.
Isn't that crazy?
Yes, yeah, that is. I didn't even think of that.
We love that one, it's like education. We love it.
Yeah.
Thank you. What's up, Maggie?
Yep.
Yes, Danny.
I'm gonna pull it up because I did take a look at it, the same IKF. There was a statement in there at the very end.
Danny, can you speak up so the camera can hear you?
Sure. It states if a student takes more than four core requirement courses as pass fail, the student will be ineligible for graduation honors. So I'm curious what that means. I don't know if anyone can explain that.
Sue, feel free, I'm happy to jump in.
So sometimes we have students who might be in an alternative education program, who are taking courses through Plato, or in a complete remote environment. And we decide, and they earn only a pass fail. So it actually left the window open for potentially someone to receive graduation honors who may not be needing the academic requirements that we really intend for those graduation honor courts to mean. So I might only have numeric grades in my enrichment-type classes and not in any of my math or science or ELA classes. So potentially, if I'm a great athlete, I might only be earning numeric grades in physical education. And then that would be the basis for my graduation honors. Whereas typical general education students, I might have my eighty-five in English, and it's factored in and averaged with my ninety-three in physical education. So we just wanted to make sure that there wasn't a way for a student to be inappropriately recognized for honorola achievement if they weren't earning numeric grades in all of their academic classes.
And before Bradley was, if I made a great job, Sue.
Well, that was good.
We started at two and went up to four. The thing, give a little flexibility for pass fail. Basically, it would allow a kid one a year on a pass fail basis. And typically, we don't have a lot of that anyway. It gives some flexibility for a pass fail, but the bulk being numerically graded. So the committee started at two and we went up to four allowed.
Okay, all right, yeah. I just didn't understand, you know, what the pass fail was. I thought everything was numeric graded, but that.
On rare, this is a rare, it's a policy for some rare circumstances.
We just don't want to encourage that as a way out of earning honors that weren't earned numerically.
Okay, thank you.
Brad?
So this generates another question. Some classes, everybody in the class is pass fail. Or can a student elect to take it as a pass fail or per number, per letter grade?
It almost never, this is so rare, it almost never happens. It's mostly a Plato credit recovery situation. Basically, every kid, for example, in English nine, gets a numeric grade. Almost nobody is on a pass fail basis in our traditional typical classes.
Well, you said almost, so what would be the reason for somebody to take it as a pass fail?
I've done this job long enough to not say always.
Okay.
Almost always. I can't think of a circumstance where it wouldn't be that way.
And not been on this board long enough to know what the next following question is.
Yeah, I don't, I can't think of any offhand, but I just don't want to say something that's not true. So I almost can never think of a, I can't think of a circumstance where it's happened, where we pass fail, like in English nine. Not to say it never would. Based on certain, an ITP, a 504 plan, et cetera, there might be a, or didn't get the credit, whatever. You played, it's more of a Plato situation, credit recovery situation than it is a traditional, I mean, out of it too.
So in elective classes, are there any elective classes that the student can choose? Do you go numeric or pass fail?
No.
They're on, okay. Thank you.
Okay, so action items of the policy is consideration to approve the following policy as a first read IKF graduation requirements.
Jolene Bradley.
All those in favor? Thank you. Consideration to approve the following policies in the second read and adoption. DJ bidding purchasing requirements.
Jolene Bradley.
All those in favor? Thank you. Superintendent's report.
Great, I'm gonna do a few things and then turn it over to Sue for our, actually, fortuitous timing with Bradley about our SR funding updates. I think our district, our team has done a wonderful job with our SR funding, being thoughtful about the expenditure. But I'll get to that in a minute, and I'll turn it to Sue. Appointments, and I know, I know folks can read, but we have Dylan and Mr. Stevenson back here. So for anybody that'd like to watch this, Savanary Thomas will be joining us as a food services assistant, actually, at the high school. And Becca Taylor, special education ed tech at our elementary school. So I know both those said middle, just some swaps towards the end. So make those updates, please. Pat Taverner retired. We wish Pat very well. Gave us some great years of service here in school nutrition. I want to, something that's not on the agenda, but just give a quick update. This board has talked about it. We have a senior here. So Mr. Wolf, our principal, and Ms. McKenna met with some senior parents and talked about the new plan for Project Graduation. And Dylan, as well as a baseball player, it'll sort of work like the baseball trip. The school will have some oversight, but the group will have more flexibility for fundraising. Think it's a nice model where parents gain some ability to do some things on their own. It kind of goes through the school. We're kind of in a marriage with them, but not really. There's some flexibility on the other side. I think the meeting went pretty well, from my understanding, regarding Project Graduation. The second thing is, per our discussion, each senior student will get a vote. So hot off the press, Dylan, you'll know this, and I think maybe your parents, if they were there, heard this. Friday night, the 31st of May at 6:00 PM, or Sunday, June 2nd at 1:00 PM, each one senior will get a vote representing their family. I will bring that to you in October. There's still some seniors who need to get set up on Google Accounts and laptops. So I was gonna bring it for this meeting. It wouldn't have been fair, not every kid would have gotten one vote. But I'll give you, bring you the results. And I think going forward, we'll start this conversation in February, and we set the school calendar in March. Graduation date will be on the school calendar. And to get everybody to agree about the perfect graduation date and time is an exercise of futility, just like a snow day. So we're not gonna do that, but we're a democratic society. So I will bring you the results of that conversation about what the kids would like, slash families. And I hope each kid represents what their family wants. Dylan, I won't put you on the spot if you're gonna represent your family.
I was just gonna ask him, would it be appropriate for him to speak?
No, probably not, Judy. We'll let Dylan keep his, we're voting private.
Okay. I was just gonna ask how the meeting went and how he.
He wasn't there, I don't think. It was just for parents. We're gonna have the kid meeting with Ms. McKenna and Ms. Stacey soon. So that's coming, Dylan. Your first to here, buddy. Oh, sorry, I've lost all train of thought on graduation. So fall learning plan review, you know that we have to every six months. We talked about it. Nothing's changed in our fall learning plan. I think we had a great start to the school year. I'm gonna give credit to our bus department, our whole team in our school. As superintendent, I have not received one concern, not one misplaced bus student. Not to say it hasn't happened, so I don't know what, but I have not heard something to the degree that has come to this office. Nothing but praise of how it started. And when you think about it, getting a thousand kids from different addresses to this institution, putting them on a schedule for learning, establishing norms in the classroom, all that happened over the past week. The work of our great team. I think it's gone very well. Our kids have transitioned nicely back to school. And I think folks are saying it feels the most normal it's felt in a long time. So there's my fall learning plan 2023, three days into school, whatever we are. I think it's gone very, very well. And now, I'd like to turn it over to Sue Day, who will speak to Mr. Perkins' question regarding SR2, SR3. I'd be happy to jump in as well.
Do I pop in on the topic?
Absolutely not, Ms. Day.
For those people who like to read the written word as well. So as you might remember, SR2 is ending on September 30th. So in just a few weeks, we have to wrap up that spending. We are in fantastic shape, but I just wanted to remind you of all the projects that we have capable to do with those special grant dollars. So hold on if we can get this to pop up.
And the board will, remember, I know, I'll let you get that up, Ms. Day. I know everybody hangs up my every word. So every state of the schools, in October and March, we talk about our spending and the things we've done through budgeting process. So we've reviewed these things on several occasions, but here they are. Ms. Day made a beautiful slide here.
So these were the projects that we completed here on the left-hand side. So our Wi-Fi update at the middle school and high school. We've been able to purchase new instructional supplies and some internet subscriptions. We were able to advocate for walkie-talkie radios for all of our staff members, saying that they were outside more during the COVID time. We purchased additional PPE. We started a new permanent substitute model where we hire an employee who is available to substitute in any class. That's been wonderful for our schools. Additional RFID, those are the radio frequency doors. So the FOB system that we now have on all of our outside doors has really improved the safety and security of our buildings. We were able to fund an additional custodial team member with SR2 for one year. If you remember way back when we were, we had some students here for two days, some here for four days. We were able to hire some additional classroom educational technicians, supplies. All of our unit ventilators at the elementary school were replaced. And to Mr. Perkins' point, which I'm going to get to a little more in SR3, we were able to adjust the SR2 grant to fund air conditioning in the high school library. We had a small pool of money after we received the main office renovation grant proposal that we thought could go towards that. So we were able to have the federal officials at the main Department of Education approve air conditioning in SR2. That project was completed. What are the two things we're wrapping up, just for your information? The high school office renovation, Dr. Landry already referred to that. We're really at the punch list item, so a few little minor things. And connection to the HVAC system, so Johnny from his office can oversee and make sure all of our air systems are handling the way that they should. That training is happening tomorrow. So that project is almost finished. So we are incredibly proud of the spending of the SR2 grant. And we are right in line with the timeline. So SR3, you'll notice a couple of things are highlighted in yellow. I'll get to that in a second. So completed the beautiful timber frame structures. We updated dishwashers in two of our kitchens at the elementary and the high school. We have air purifiers in all of our spaces. We cleaned all of the air vents in our buildings. We upgraded the road bus lights by saying we had more parents on our roads because of COVID. Everything had to be connected back to the pandemic. We replaced all of our water coolers. We provided that Edmenton Remote Learning Program for families in 2122 that weren't comfortable being in person. We purchased new laptops, new iPads. We had a pool testing coordinator for one year. Last year, we added the grade-one interventionist for that bubble class that we have. We had ninety-two students in first grade. We've also had an RTI coach for two years who supported students with their social, emotional, and behavioral needs at the elementary. In process, so to group together the three yellows. Those are the ones that are, if we were to want to adjust the SR3 grant, to consider a proposal for expanding air conditioning. Those would be the three areas that we could potentially request consideration to take the funding from those areas to put towards air conditioning. We have $200,000 in outside all-purpose courts that we have not used. That could be dedicated, potentially, if we were able to get grant approval for a different project. The RTI coach, which is really challenging for our elementary school. That position is unfilled at this time. We certainly hope to fill it. I don't know if we're going to have a candidate. We haven't had any yet. So potentially, there are dollars there that could be reallocated. The other spot, we ended up, thanks to your support, hiring an additional grade-two teacher. So those salaries for interventionists for the grade-two class for 23 and 24, perhaps those grant dollars could also be reallocated. So if this board wanted, there's some potential we could look into air conditioning. I know it's super challenging, just to put a number in your mind. The high school library was $24,000. So air conditioning our campus would not be an inexpensive venture, but it's certainly something we could consider. The other things that are still in process, the middle school after-school program. We're starting up the elementary after-school program. They're going two different models. The middle school are shorts, or short activities that might happen over a few weeks. They have a homework club that happens once a week at each grade level. The elementary after-school program is going to be a four-day-a-week program. So we're very excited. We've been doing some professional development. We've hired an additional special education teacher. We have that additional pre-K classroom, which is going incredibly well. We have the STEM educator. We're still paying for an additional custodian from the grant. And then this grant has also funded our expanded summer schools, and we have instructional supply money. So those would be the three potential areas that we might underspend. So those would be the three potential areas that we might underspend, and we could consider looking at at a different grant application if we wanted to look at that.
Sue, I have a question. I should have given it to you. Two things. First of all, how many people, potential subs came to the training?
I think it was almost twelve.
It was eleven, yep.
Thank you. And how many children in summer school, approximately?
At the elementary last year, this summer, we had eighty, just about eighty students. At the middle school, I think it was closer to thirty-five, and the high school, I think, was like ten to fifteen.
Thank you. And Jolene, Brad, and then.
The first yellow highlighted item here reminded me of something I wanted to bring up tonight, and that is to thank the board for allowing tennis courts to be used for pickleball, which is very popular. There are probably, I play one again, in them. There are probably three courts that are in use and sometimes the fourth one could be.
It is very popular. I agree, Jolene.
That is not just old folks like me. There are other people who come too.
I completely support that, Jolene. I agree with that.
Well, I just wanted to, thank you. Thank you.
Brad, is that, Allison, do you have some?
Yeah.
It's kind of covered by the hand sanitizer. There you go. Brad and then Allison.
So you said that the outside all-purpose courts are the potential two hundred thousand dollars there. What is the money potential on the next two that you got?
Here, I would roughly say we probably have seventy-ish thousand dollars. If we were not to hire anyone for this year, that would be the salary and benefits of that position that was anticipated, and this one would be closer to about fifty.
So. Literally took the numbers out of my mouth, Miss Day. I would agree.
Oh, thanks.
I guess the thing that, I do think it's important to have kids, if they want, we want them to learn. You know, we're feeding them, but they can't learn when they're hungry. Well, you know what? They can't learn when it's eighty-eight degrees either. So that's something to think about. I'm just wondering if, and we, from time to time, we have discussions about students not coming to school. Well, if they knew they were gonna leave a home that's not air-conditioned and come to a warm, cool place. If that might make a little bit of difference. Not that, that's not the reason they should be coming to school, but, you know. I'm just thinking that the way this, the weather patterns are going all across this country, things don't appear to be going to get better. And, you know, we hear the argument every year, well, you know, we don't want the school to go too late in June because they, you know, they don't learn when it's hot. Well, if they don't, we need to make it so it's not hot. That's my point.
Okay. Allison?
I was just curious, assuming that, you know, we can come up with money and we did do something like this. Where's the money for the increased electricity gonna come from?
Local taxpayers.
And do we have any kind of ballpark idea of what that would look like?
Honestly, no, I don't.
Because I know, I know mine makes, like, takes my breath away every month when it comes in. I can't even imagine, you know?
If we, yeah, I think that's what we've talked about. So the cost benefit analysis, right? And every superintendent, I don't say every, because I don't speak to every, everybody's wrestling with the same thing, right? These are gonna be three or four hot days. The cost of putting either permanent air conditioning or window unit in every window for the ten days that is really, now it's super uncomfortable and terrible these ten days. I wanna be sympathetic, and I understand that we are in air-conditioned offices over here. I totally get that. It's easy for me to say, oh, it's fine. I understand it's hot. I have children in school. Dylan and Mr. Stevenson were in school today. I am certain it was hot in the school. So it's, it's basically about putting a dollar value on that, right? So I just called this up quick. It took your breath away. The, this is a whole H VAC renovation, so I don't wanna get this number out. This is an article in the paper, so it's, it's Martha's Vineyard. It's not Saukabye Valley, but longer-term recommendations, replacement of H VAC, mechanical equipment, temperature controls, electric, estimated cost of four point two million dollars for Martha Vineyard Regional High School. Now that might be much bigger than this. But I recall when we first had, I shouldn't give away any of these negotiations. We first had a company here, remember to go over everything and what everything would be, and it was more than we have available just for one school. Now, if we could get out the companies, we could get out the quotes, and then you do a window unit in every classroom, because it wouldn't be fair to do it some and the other. Who puts them in? Who takes them out? Where do we store them when they're not here? How long is it gonna last? What's the electricity draw? So it's basically a cost benefit analysis, right? How much is it worth to keep the kids cooler? And I don't know how much cooler the window units would work. Honestly, in this big school, you'd have to get a pretty big window unit. Some of our classrooms are a thousand square feet. I'm not saying it's not worth it, but there's a, probably a fairly significant cost to cooling our schools for the number of days it's hot.
And we need to keep in mind what the tax burden might be by this next cycle, and that on, you know, something like that thrown in on top.
I think the, and now, what's a lot? I don't know. And what, everybody's definition of a lot is different, but yes, I think the cost to run all the air conditioning would be fairly significant on an ongoing basis, yes. Particularly to electricity. Everybody sees this as public too. You look at your C N P bill, it's seventeen cents a kilowatt hour instead of, you know, we had locked in for much less than that the last quarter.
Miss Day, and then Maggie, and then Danny.
Sue, can you tell me the outside all-purpose courts that's in process?
I'll do that.
On the process list, just what they are, where they are.
Yeah, that's totally me. So this board had originally approved, we had redone our tennis courts that Jolene spoke about. In fact, I think tennis is the least popular. I think it's basketball and pickleball are the most popular out there. So we talked about a third court, and you have to remember that Sue Day deserves a ton of credit. Everything you see here in the grant writing and all that, that's all Sue Day. She does a heck of a job working with the D L E and making that happen, but. So we, we're gonna put in a third court at the high school, which A, would allow for a test. I don't know if we'd ever have that, but for flexibility down the road and more pickleball and basketball. At the time we wrote this, the big thing was to get people outside to the fresh air because we didn't wanna be too close together. It seems different now that we're three years into COVID or whatever we are, but that's why it was originally written. We had taken on a lot this summer, so we didn't go forward with the outdoor purpose courts. And I think Sue wrote a second one in here for our middle school. Our middle schoolers don't have a whole lot of playground area, paved playground area to shoot baskets, hit a tennis ball, kick a ball around. So we were thinking maybe a second one here. And I don't wanna give away negotiations either. I'm not sure two hundred would cover two courts. How's that? Can we leave it at that? So we put a pin in it until we have this upcoming summer, because S R three is in June until September thirtieth of twenty-four. The S R two, the slide before, is due this September thirtieth. I think like Sue said, we're right on pace. We have a little bit of time. But just about a year now, and so if you can believe it, it's almost September thirty, twenty twenty-three. So it's gonna be one more outdoor court. To recap, at the high school, it's made three, probably in the opposite direction. So the two go this way, probably like this to make three courts. And one here at the middle school to give our kids a little more room to play. That was the original intent of the outdoor purpose courts and why we put that in.
So follow-up for either. So we, if we don't use the money and time, it's gone. We lose it.
True.
And then what are the restrictions on us using it for other things, other than what was originally?
We would have to submit, we would have to request for our grant to be reopened, and then we would have to submit a new proposal. And we would connect it to why we believe that due to COVID pandemic, this would be helpful. So everything has to be connected back to either, so they call it actually the use of funds. We either have to connect it to, is it implementing and preventing and prevention or mitigation? Is it about addressing loss of instructional time? Is it an unallowable use, or is it because of its, an intervention for academic, social, emotional, and mental health needs? It has to be connected back to one of those four categories to be eligible.
And so realistically, because everything is getting more expensive all the time, we probably can't get all of the courts that we had originally intended. I mean, really, anyways.
I can't, it's negotiations, but it would be unlikely to get two courts as designed for the dollar value we originally budgeted.
And then what hap, are we, then what happens?
Probably get one court instead of two.
But like with the S R, do we get in trouble for not finishing the project as written, or will you just amend the?
We would just, we would amend it, yep. I don't think we'd be in trouble, like, oh, we couldn't make the outdoor courts work for this reason, if that wouldn't be a problem.
I think that we only could do one because of the cost constraints, etc.
That makes sense, yeah. So I just needed clarity, because I don't think I was on the school board when the original outdoor court thing.
Yeah.
Oh, right.
I personally, it was eighty degrees at my house today too, and I worked, and I survived. I have central air conditioning. I just like the fresh air better until it gets completely ridiculous. I can't stand it anymore. My kid had been home, we would have been in it or outside where it was hotter. I sent him to school. I think there are much more impactful and meaningful ways to spend any potential dollars we might have than keeping kids cool for five days a year. We talk about it all the time, where we're lacking in our district for funding and what we can pay staff, and we're so far behind in this and that. And A C would be pretty far down the list of places that I would vote we are behind personally.
Maggie, Danny, and then Brad?
I guess this is Suzanne and how, a school, what do you call it, on the Gold Coast. One of those schools I know has opened the libraries, the library in one of the schools, and and teachers can sign up for, to bring their class to the library for the forty minutes or whatever. And I, I don't think it would be a big hassle if you got the kids in line and told them, you know, we're gonna go get cooled off for forty minutes. I would think they would think it was wonderful, and the teacher could, teacher, I mean, we're only gonna do this for a few more days.
Yeah, it looks like by the end of this week.
Is it, this whole place is, like, this could be a classroom.
So this is a space, our main office space is a space, every school, main office and library is a cooling space, every school. So they have that opportunity.
So in the school I'm talking about, I know that the librarian man has, has a sheet and the teachers sign up. I'd like to come at eight o'clock and bring my kids for forty minutes.
To the point, then, Maggie, thank you to the point. Next week, seventy-one, seventy-five, sixty-nine, sixty-eight, seventy-one. This is over. It looks like Saturday is gonna be eighty-three. Ninety tomorrow, eighty-seven on Friday, and then eighty-three, and then it seems like summer's about over.
I mean, probably we aren't utilizing the library like we normally would during a regular school year, this time of year. Would it be a hassle?
No, I think some classes did visit the library today. I think you're absolutely correct.
Danny, and then Brad?
So I have a couple thoughts. I know my daughter is outfit planning for tomorrow to make sure she stays cool and also planning her hair. You know, so I think there's steps the kids can take to try and cool off. I guess one of my comments with regards to implementing A C, I know we have some spaces that are lacking, like the high school gym is incredibly hot. And then on the tour, when we visited the new kindergarten space, that was really hot in there, so. And then, like you said, the second floor, so I don't know if there's a way we could start to think about prioritizing some of these really hot spaces. Also considering action plans to try and keep them cool. And I know everyone said, you know, it's a few days, et cetera, but, you know, it sounded like we had quite a few students in elementary school attending summer school too, so I'd just like to think about the summer school kids as well.
I'll jump in on that. I'm sure, I think, so, summer school, we do provide air conditioning in the rooms that they go to summer school, because it's straight summertime. So yes, this is only an issue.
During school.
August twenty-eighth to June twelfth. I wanna make sure I'm right, Sue Day. Every room has, yeah, thank you.
We have window units in any classroom that's used for summer school.
Okay. And then I guess my last comment, more of a question, is what is our threshold for, like, unacceptable temperature for a running environment?
That's a good question. So Carrie Sawyer sent something out today. It was mid, uh, let's see, I think it was mid.
And who's Gary Sawyer?
Carrie, our athletic director. Okay, here we go. However, note, if the temperature in a room is above mid-nineties, fans will not cool it down or prevent heat problems. So mid-nineties, and that's getting pretty hot. So rest, to recap from the earlier discussion, it was eighty-five on our warmest second floor, plus or minus one. Some of them were in eighty-six, right? That's plus one. Some were eighty-four, depending on the sun side of the building or not. We didn't have any room in the nineties. I know some school districts did, and I don't wanna get into who or what. They can make their own decisions. But some schools were in the nineties, stay in their rooms. We were not, I went after school, so hopefully we'd been warm all day. Probably, now their kids weren't in there, so body heat, but it had a chance to heat up all day, and that's, those were our temperatures.
Do we have curtains on?
Yeah, there's shades. So some of the rooms I went in had their shades drawn, the fans were blowing, that cool air was coming in. We'll let that go all night long. Hopefully come into slightly cooler, or warm up again all day tomorrow. We'll do it one more time for Friday, and hopefully next week we're through it. It seems like we're gonna be through unless this changes. And I know about the outfit and.
Yeah.
Hair choices. I'm somewhat familiar in my house, to be honest, with that. Yes, I know how that goes. Brad?
So fourth one down, how much money is allocated to professional development?
I would have to look. I think it was around ten thousand dollars.
Well, that's all.
Anything else?
Is Suzanne looking it up?
Oh, I can, I'll have to dig into the grant. I can get that back too if you want, but it's not on my chart there, but.
So it seems like, let, just know this, I think all school districts wrestle with the same thing. The cost that goes into cooling for a limited number of days in Maine. To Brad's point, it might get to be more and more. We're not unique in this discussion. Every year, we sort of bat around, and I think appropriately so, and every year, we seem to sort of settle. I think I'm hearing that we'll get through the next couple of days, keep an eye on the temperature, try and keep them cool, try and get them to the library, try and give them the shade outside, give them water breaks, keep an eye on the kids. If something got ridic, rooms got to ninety-five degrees, certainly we, that's a cause for concern. Right now, it's warm and uncomfortable. That's what it is. And I'm sorry going through it. I know it's hot. I walked every school, every, every building today. I know it's warm there, and it's probably a challenge, but I think this is typically where we settle out. I don't think that the remaining dollars would put A C throughout our institution. And I do think there is an ongoing electrical cost, which certainly you're the board, and if construction wants to think about it, the board wants to think about it, and we want to go forward with that. You know, we're agents of the board, and we'll certainly look into it.
Allison?
Is there anything in between a fan and an air conditioner? I know I've seen units, and I can't for the life of me remember what they're called right now. I think there's, the slang for them is swamp coolers. But it, it's, it's not a full-on air conditioner, but it's far, it actually cools rather than just blow the air around like a fan. And they're, you know, it's a single unit, and I think one or two units would easily cool a room. Depend, and I don't know if they come in bigger size, you know, different sizes, and they run on way less electricity than an air conditioner. And I, you know, or is that just like a whole bunch of hassle, because now you're dealing with a bunch of different units?
So good, I, I admit to being ignorant of swamp coolers.
Well, I can't think of the proper name for them.
I think you're talking about a portable air conditioner.
No, I've got a portable air conditioner at home, and it wheels right up to the window, and you actually put it in the window. And this is not that. It doesn't go in a window.
Is it usually roof-mounted? Swamp cool, swamp coolers?
Okay, well, then maybe that's not what I'm thinking of, but I can, I can go home and find what it is and send it to you.
I think certainly this is an appropriate conversation for construction as we continue to move forward. You know, do we want it? How much do we wanna explore it, and what buildings, and what are our key spaces, and how much are we willing to put into it, and what kind of units do we want? And I know we knee-jerk when it gets hot like this, and I understand why, and I feel bad for the kids that are.
It's on the agenda for next month.
We can certainly discuss this for sure.
And the other thing is, things are not gonna change. I'm gonna bring up climate change, but it's probably gonna happen.
Okay.
Suzanne, what would you think if, if we had sprinklers outside, especially for the elementary school, where they could just run through and get a little bit?
If I was a teacher, I'd be going, oh, no.
Let's get slip and slides, Miss Day. I'll be the first one on it. Let's do it.
I'll, I'll order that tonight.
The kids, the kids would love it.
Perfect.
I'll donate it.
I don't think we've used sprinklers during traditional the school year, but we've absolutely had them during summer school.
Oh, so it is down though. Oh, so it is done, though, on the property?
At the elementary, we absolutely have the sprinkler.
Jolene, you have a question?
I was just gonna say, I'm the price, and I'm not gonna go down either, you know, we were talking about.
No question. And sorry, my Martha's Vineyard article, so that price was from 2015. So that's eight-year-old price for Martha Vineyard High School. Complete HVAC, to be fair, not just A C. But I think we'd have a hard time just straight A C without the HVAC component in this.
I think we, window units would be the only thing we could have or consider in that budget.
Swamp coolers are much more energy efficient than that conditioning unit.
There you go. Or take them down to the river.
Come on, my house could be, Julie.
We'd be paying in insurance, everything we're saving on A C.
I'll go with the laundry.
The pre-K has learned already to be in a line, I found out this week. I'm not ever being aligned. To the river.
All right, so we, we are done with this, now the next is, um, we're gonna be going into executive session. So considerations to enter executive session, discuss negotiations, pursue it to one. M R S A section 456A.
So.
Bradley? Jolene?